Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 15th, 2025 Pinellas County School Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order. We will start this morning with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Caprice Edmond, and then followed by the National Anthem. I ask that you please stand and remain standing until the completion of the National Anthem. Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you. Next, we will share a video that shows to you how we both invest in and celebrate our amazing teachers. Let's take a look.
ESET stands for Elevating and Celebrating Effective Teachers in Teaching, and it is a yearly conference we have for Pinellas County teachers, where we bring teachers from all schools, grade levels, backgrounds together. The theme for this year's ESET conference is Teachers Wear Many Hats, and really just focusing in on how being a teacher is so much more than just teaching.
Inspiring students. The outreach, thinking about the future was a big one, so I put it right over the top.
Put into one word is to grow.
I am not only helping students academically, but also socially.
The goal each year with ESET is to energize teachers, to prep them for the new school year with a renewed sense of why they love this profession.
The ability to network with others has been incredible, getting to see teachers from other schools.
We want to promote those relationships by giving them different team-building activities and opportunities to engage in topics that they want to learn more about. ESET is a really unique experience for our Pinellas teachers. They can own their learning and really feel like leaders within their schools.
I'll bring back to the leadership team lots of insight, for example, ways in which you can make a class relational, ways you can use AI in the classroom effectively, and also ways in which you can communicate effectively with your students.
I really think that this conference has been awesome in helping me re-center my focus and really start to look for what is my, like, next step, actually stopping, reflecting, and charting a course for the future.
The confidence that you gain, learning more ways to engage with students, and how to make your, your school better overall, the, the memories that you are able to cultivate, and the, the events you get to put on in the celebration of student success.
That's fantastic. Next on the agenda, introduction of professional and community representatives, Isabel Mascherinas, our Public Information Officer.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Hendrick and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations, representing the North Pinellas League of Women Voters, Nancy Cohen and Jean Reynolds. Thank you.
Good morning. Before we move into the rest of our agenda, I would just like to mention a few things. First, as you saw in that video, in just one of the many ways that we invest and celebrate our teachers, and you heard them talk about their takeaways, the confidence it builds, and the inspiration as they move into the school year, back into their classrooms. This is one of the reasons that Pinellas County Schools was just again, for a second year in a row, awarded an A District from the state of Florida, and we are all very proud of that. I want to say, I know every school board member up here was thrilled and proud to get that email, and we want to say thank you to all of the teachers, staff, students, and families who have supported this excellence in our schools. We've been steadfast in cultivating a culture of, of excellence across the Pinellas County School District for, for a decade now, including the local referenda that all of you have supported in past. It makes a difference, and I believe that these sustained supports show what's possible when we invest in and believe in education. So congratulations, and thank you. I just, I am going to give a couple of numbers, although I guess, Mr. Hendrick, you're going to give numbers later. I'm going to let you do that. Okay, maybe twice. So, so last year, eighty percent of our schools were A or B schools, eighty percent. This year, ninety percent of our schools are A or B schools. In just a little more context, ten years ago, in 2015, it was sixty percent. So we went from sixty percent ten, ten years ago, to eighty percent last year, to ninety percent this year. It's truly extraordinary, and we are, we are both proud and grateful. The next thing I'd like to mention, I'd like to welcome Ms. Dahl to the dais. Jennifer Dahl is now our Chief Operating Officer, after having been our Chief Strategic Impact Officer for several years. We appreciate your capability and your leadership and commitment to our district. And then also, I want to mention that there are six board members here today. Ms. Peters is not able to join us today, so any, any vote will represent the six members present. Onto item two on our agenda, amendments to the agenda. Mr. Hendrick, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
There are no amendments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Board members, any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda? A motion from Mrs. Kane, and a second from Mrs. Meyer. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes six to zero. We don't have any items on our special order agenda today. The next item is public comments on agenda items. Mrs. Howt, do we have any speakers on agenda items?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are two speakers for agenda items.
Thank you. Please go ahead and call them.
Sonia Howman is speaking to items seven point seven through seven point nine, and Mark Clutho is speaking to items seven point one three and eight point one.
Thank you, Pinellas County School Board, for allowing me to speak. My name is Sonia Howman, M.D. I'm a Christian mom of four graduates of the public school system and a retired critical care physician. First of all, today I want to thank you for your preemptive action to partially allay the financial shortfall that will ultimately so impact public education in our county. Therefore, I'm speaking strong support of applying for IDEA Part B. It's so reassuring that this board is seeking to protect students with disabilities, as well as the provision of coordinated early intervention, which is so necessary. And thank you for applying for the other grant, the Florida Diagnostic Learning Resources of Gulf Coast Project Grant, to promote professional development. I strongly urge each of you to vote in favor of these requests. I am so particularly thankful for you, given that on July 1st, the Office of Budget Management froze over $6 million in federal education funds, including Title I and after-school programs. This isn't any kind of political issue. This is about teachers being paid and about mental health services continuing in Pinellas County for our kids at need it. I'm asking the board to release a public statement about the freeze. Our families deserve to know what's happening before the school year starts and how this is going to impact them. Second, I'm urging you to please hold a town hall to answer the questions for parents after they learn about this and to hear their concerns. And third, I'm just, and this is a reach, asking you to formally pass a resolution urging the OMB to release the funds. I have a draft version that I can share if you even want, and to send a copy of this resolution to the Office of Management of Budget and our congresspeople. This isn't about taking sides. This is about protecting Pinellas County schools and every single student in it every day. And I thank God that you are my school board, because I go to a lot of school boards, and you guys have been awesome. Thank you so much.
Mark Clutho Largo. Well, your bids and policies, well, what's that give us? More of the same. A headline like this. What caused extreme rainfall flooding in Texas Hill Country? Waters in the Gulf are three, four, five degrees warmer than normal. That's what your policies give us. And your eight point one. Oh, that's something else. State-of-the-art facilities? Not. Just look at the building across the street. So far from that, it's disgusting. We're heading into the hurricane season unprepared. Storms like Milton will strike. Will we see them coming? Well, again, your supposed state-of-the-art buildings, they are what's breeding these big storms. And you know, I was at that last Hillsborough Commission or School Board meeting, and they had a moment of silence for all those suffering Texas people. And like them, you are complicit in their suffering because you ignore science of high-performance passive solar building. Cause and effect, state-of-the-art? No. Your buildings are belching carbon and fueling these storms that are going to make things worse than what we've seen.
Madam Chair, there are no other speakers for agenda items?
Thank you. We don't have any unfinished business on the agenda today. The next item is our consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second to pass the consent agenda? A motion from Mrs. Long and a second from Ms. Edmond. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes six to zero. Item eight point one, request approval to lease devices from NTT Data Americas, Inc. May I have a motion and a second to approve this item? Motion from Ms. Meyer and a second from Ms. Blacksburg. Mr. Hendrick, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, as you know, we've invested for over six years now in our PCS Connects Initiative, to bring digital technology to students in our schools and in their homes. And as we continue to analyze and find better ways to become more efficient with this program and more successful, this particular initiative that you're voting on this morning helps to save dollars, but also provide a better service for our students and in terms of customer service, a better response rate. So here to share more about that is our Chief Technology Officer, Keith Mastorites.
Good morning, Madam Chair, school board members, and Mr. Hendrick. I'm here today to present to you the progress and evolution of PCS Connects, the district's one-to-one student take-home device program. This initiative has been a cornerstone in empowering students with access to technology, bridging the gap between classroom learning and at-home engagement. I'm pleased to share how PCS Connects has not only achieved remarkable success, but it also transitions from a district purchase model to a district lease option, which is a change informed by stakeholder feedback, cost savings, measures, and operational efficiency. Since the inception of the program in 2019, PCS Connects has celebrated for its ability to provide students with the tools they need to thrive in a digitally-driven world. This program has significantly enhanced student learning experiences, enabling them to engage with innovative educational resources, collaboratively seamlessly with peers, collaborate seamlessly with peers, and develop critical skills for their futures. Teachers have also benefited leveraging the devices to create dynamic lessons that adapt to individual learning styles. Through regular, through regular evaluations and data collection, we have seen measurable improvements in student performance, participation, and accessibility to learning materials, both during and after-school hours, underscoring the program's role in leveling the educational playing field for all. This shift to a district lease option represents a win-win for Pinellas County schools. By leasing devices rather than purchasing them outright, the district achieves significant cost savings while maintaining the same level of service and quality. Based on a detailed cost comparison, leasing is projected to save the district an average of 3.5 million per year over the five-year term of the lease when compared to purchasing the devices outright. Leasing allows for regular technology upgrades, ensuring that students always have access to the latest tools without incurring the large upfront costs associated with outright purchases. Furthermore, the lease model streamlines device management and distribution for maintenance and repairs, reducing administrative overhead and improving efficiency across the program. This approach enables PCS to allocate resources more effectively, efficiently, ensuring that every dollar spent directly benefits our students. The transition of PCS Connects from a purchase model to a lease option exemplifies our district commitment to innovation, collaboration, and fiscal responsibility. It's a testament to the success of the program and the power of community engagement in shaping its future. As we move forward, PCS Connects will continue to enrich the lives of our students and serve as a beacon of technological, technological equity and excellence in education. Thank you for your continued support and for fostering a learning environment where all students can succeed.
Thank you, Mr. Mastorites.
Thank you.
Board members, any discussion? Ms. Edmond?
I would just like to say thank you. I did submit a question regarding this agenda item, and I just want to add that the current inventory system that we currently have and the new repair method will operate concurrently, offering continuity of inventory practices while improving the efficiency of maintenance operations. And some of the things that we may have heard is that, you know, our laptops are broken, or we need quicker fixes, and this seems like a good pathway to that solution. And then you've already mentioned the cost savings on this, which is quite significant. So thank you very much for bringing this item forward.
Thank you. We're excited, too.
Thank you. Other discussion or comments? Thank you. We have a motion and second on the floor to approve item eight point one. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes six to zero. New business. Items introduced by the superintendent. Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You led the meeting off with sharing that last week we learned that Pinellas County Schools is once again an A. Congratulations to our board members. You're just the second board ever to be able to say you are an A school board. Congratulations. Nearly ninety percent of our schools are in As and Bs, as Mrs. Heinz said. No Ds and Fs for the second year in a row, which is also important. We increased our ranking in the state to thirteen out of sixty-seven districts. That's also our highest ranking ever, up from fifteen, which was our previous high last year. And one of the things that this board has been so passionate about is early literacy, and our third-grade reading scores improved to sixty-seven percent proficiency. And just for some context there, in 2018, the state was at fifty-seven percent proficient in third-grade reading, and in 2025, the state is still at fifty-seven percent. During that same time period, Pinellas County Schools went from fifty-three percent to sixty-seven percent, a fourteen-point increase. So congratulations to all of those pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, second grade teachers who lead in and feed into making those students readers, which then, as we know, as research shows, keeps students proficient thereafter. We achieved all of this thanks to our hard-working students, dedicated teachers and support staff, and the support of our school board, families, and community members. So grateful to report on this. We'll have a little more detail for you at next week's workshop. As we get ready for the new school year, yes, sad note for all those students, twenty-seven days away from the start of school. We are gearing up, though, and our first day of school is August 11th, and you can start to see back-to-school materials on our website, including links for calendars, lunch information, back-to-school events, and more. But it is still summertime, and so we still have summer camps going on. I want to thank our communications team, who's been pushing these camps out to the media, and you've seen a number of stories, both in print and on television, our recent Jill of All Trades Camp, and an Elementary Boys Read Camp that has been going on, as well as a number of STEM and career technical education ones that we've highlighted in previous sessions. Like to invite the community on just the second day of school to our next Listen and Learn event. It will be on August 12th at Ridgecrest Elementary School, 5:30 PM. This school year, each of our Listen and Learn events will feature a specific topic that we'll ask for feedback on, and this particular one is on our Bridging the Gap Plan, which has just finished its eighth year. We'll cover district news, provide highlights, and have an opportunity for the public to ask questions of staff and our school board. And on our school website as well, or on our district website, you'll find the addition of our July newsletter. If you have not subscribed to our district newsletter, encourage the public to do so. This month's features our Cyber Ambassadors, who will launch digital responsibility podcasts on their campuses in August, an extension of the board's push for digital responsibility over the last year. And we also highlight an alumnus in every single edition. And this month, it is a Tarpon Springs High School alum who, for the last fifteen years, has led the Pinellas County and University of Florida Institute of Food Agricultural Sciences. You may have passed that building on Olmerton Road a million times. She has done that for the last fifteen years, and you can hear a little bit more about that. But board members, I'd like to take just a few minutes today to give an update on our budget. On June 24th, at our school board workshop, we presented to you our proposed 25-26 school year budget. As you know, we have our first budget hearing coming up on July 29th to set our tentative budget and our tentative millage rates. As is the normal case at this time of year, we've been closing out last year's budget and finalizing available funds for the new school year. I'd like to share with the board and the public a few important events that have occurred since our workshop just a few weeks ago. As you know, when we discussed at the workshop, we are facing increased healthcare insurance costs, rising utility rates, an increase in the Florida retirement system, and all of those things went into effect on July 1st. But two days after our workshop, on June 26th, we received word from Tallahassee that our final distribution of statewide funds in the FEFP, the Florida Education Finance Program, statewide was going to be $47 million less than anticipated, in large part due to the 25,000 students that were dual-registered as both scholarship recipients and public school students. You may remember that this held up the release of the budget and discussions in Tallahassee for quite some time. There was no warning of this shortfall in the statewide level, although it was discussed, but for us, that meant 1.4 million dollars less in FEFP revenue due to a shortage across the state in total revenue. The Florida Department of Education also announced a few days later, a reduction in Title I funds across the state, which amounts to about $300,000 less for Pinellas County. And from Tallahassee, they've still not provided the fourth calculation, which you've looked at in your budget books, and you know that that's sort of our starting place for the new school year and the basis for the budget that you'll approve on July 29th. So while we're working with the best information we have, we need you to know that we've received a couple of updates from Tallahassee in the last couple of weeks, both with negative numbers, and we still haven't received sort of those final balances for the school year. But more importantly, the larger topic I'd like to discuss today is the freezing of federal funds by the United States Department of Education. On June 30th, one day before the start of our fiscal year, the U.S. Department of Education announced that it is withholding almost $7 billion in federal funds for review to ensure compliance with federal law. This amounts to just under $400 million in Florida, and in Pinellas County, it amounts to $9 million in the following grants which cover these topics. Title II Part A, which is professional development and instructional coaching, and for us, that includes our professional development department and programs, instructional coaches, and in large part, our middle school innovation rollout. Title III Part A, which covers English language instruction for multilanguage learners, direct support for teachers and students in acquiring the language, the testing that's required in federal law, and the community engagement that occurs with families to support them in the process. The third grant that is on pause is Title IV Part A, which ensures a well-rounded education, safe and healthy schools, and technology. In Pinellas County Schools, we spend those dollars on enrichment for students, including in the arts, and gifted, and some examples of that is a field trip to the Florida Orchestra, mobile hands-on STEM labs, digital citizenship programs that were previously measured, gifted programs, and after-school programs and summer programs for students. Decreased mental health and school safety supports, as the Title IV grant funds school social workers, it funds our threat management team, and it helps to support the safety and well-being of students in all of our schools. And Title IV is also the place where we do a lot of our college support for students through our College and Career Centers, including Elevating Excellence, our SAT and PSAT preparation, and programs to support students for college and career exploration. The fourth grant on pause is Title IV Part B, which serves six schools in our district for after-school programs, about 350 students. And the last grant is the Adult Education and Integrated English Literacy and Civics Education Grant, which provides for adult basic education, teaching adults English language, and GED preparation. The rationale for the official review of these funds from the Office of Budget Management and the Federal United States Department of Education is that they are reviewing the expenditures to ensure compliance with federal law. The main issue that I bring this up today to discuss with the board on this impoundment of the $9 million for Pinellas County Schools is that, as we discussed at the June 24th workshop, we anticipated receiving these funds, allocated these funds, hired individuals, began the programming for all of this the next day, on July 1st. There are forty-seven employees who are funded from these grants and do essential work for our students and teachers. I think I can speak for the board and our staff that are reviewing these funds to ensure compliance is an absolute reasonable activity, and the board supports spending the funds in compliance with state and federal laws, as we've already demonstrated year after year. However, the lack of timing and transparency regarding when or if these funds will even be released is completely unreasonable. To be clear, the members that represent us in Washington, D.C., in the United States Senate, Rick Scott and Ashley Moody, and our two members of the U.S. House of Representatives, Anna Paulina Luna and Kathy Castor, voted for these funds to be dispersed to their constituents and have already done so. voted for these funds to be dispersed to their constituents and have already done so. We're simply waiting on these to be dispersed after they've been appropriated. I want to thank the offices of Representative Luna and Castor for their collaboration with us in advocating for the release of these funds. There are several other groups advocating on our behalf as well, including the State Superintendent's Association, the School Boards Association, and a number of national groups that are also entering the conversation. We appreciate their support. And I want to thank the board for your advocacy over the last several weeks, working behind the scenes and talking to a number of our local legislators, our federal legislators, and other groups that have done this. We have known for over twelve months that changes to the amount and purpose of federal grants allocated to states and local districts may occur beginning in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. In fact, over a year ago, Board Member Peters and I met with Representative Luna to share our opinions on these possible changes and offer which federal grants were most impactful for her constituents, and if cuts were needed, which ones we felt we could live without. I shared similar information in a meeting with Representative Castor and Chief Operating Officer Jennifer Dull a few weeks later. And this board discussed this possibility at our June twenty-fourth workshop. In fact, Ms. Edmonds attended an event with the United States Department of Education representative and reported back to the board on these proposed changes, asked specific questions. The board discussed it and said that a year from now, we may need to prepare for possible cuts in these grants. We discussed this at length, and yet we left that board meeting, that workshop that day with a clear understanding that this was a year away, as did our own representatives and our senators. And so today I share this update with the board for two major reasons. First, to let the board know that the budget that we'll bring back to you on July twenty-ninth will not include these federal funds unless they are released in the very near future. And second, to that end, without these federal funds, we will need to adjust positions and programs funded by these grants accordingly. This will mean real and actual cuts to services that directly impact student achievement in our district, including some of those that I mentioned in the grant, but others across the district in order to balance our budget. We will not lay off any employees. We will redistribute them to vacant positions or other places, but know that programs will cease to exist, some of the functions that we did will cease to exist, and the burden on other employees will increase. Some of the previous programs that we've offered simply may not exist in twenty-five, twenty-six. I will bring you these recommendations at the July twenty-second workshop for a public discussion. You won't vote on them individually, but we'll have a budget to vote on on July twenty-ninth that includes all of the things that we do. So the second reason I bring it to you today is to pass it back to Mrs. Hines for discussion with the board on any information you've learned or advocacy that you've been able to do on behalf of our students. And I want to say for the public's benefit that it is clear that our board has engaged in this conversation. Over the last twelve or fourteen months, they've done their homework, they've done their job. They support our students, as do our staff and our community. And yet here we sit today with a budget hole that will have real implications on our students. Mrs. Hines?
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and take up some discussion on this topic now. I did clear the queue here, so if anyone had indicated they'd like to speak, and it was in regards to this topic, please, please go ahead and indicate so again. I would share that, you know, just to mention to folks, the federal government operates on a July one, excuse me, an October one fiscal year. So the federal government, October one fiscal year. The state of Florida and all sixty-seven school districts within the state of Florida operate on a July one fiscal year. So while the federal government might feel like, hey, we're going to hold these funds and check for, and check for compliance now, the problem is we start school in less than a month, right? And so to hold these funds now causes, is causing some instability across all sixty-seven school districts in Florida, but also across, across the nation. And so I think, you know, one thing is we just need to advise, release the funds for this year if you want to review for compliance. Because, you know, absolutely, I think all public tax dollars should be legally compliant. They, they should be legally compliant, accountable to standards, and financially transparent, which is why you often hear me advocating for those expectations to be applied anywhere that public tax dollars are given to include any K-12 education entity or, or otherwise. So by all means, take the time and make sure that these are compliant for the coming, for the coming school year. I think noting that, you know, two things, we talked earlier, we celebrate and we still celebrate our student achievement and our district grade and our school grades for certain. That is directly correlated to the way that we invest these funds. So one of these things that, one of the things you might have heard Mr. Hendrick mention, for instance, was our middle school experience program. Well, in, that's about four hundred thousand dollars of this nine million dollars is the middle school experience program. Well, in two thousand twenty-two, out of twenty-two middle schools in Pinellas County, eight were A or B. So thirty-six percent of our middle schools were an A or B school. And now, after starting the, the middle school experience, which is essentially training, pedagogy, inspiration, collaboration with teachers and leaders in our middle schools, it's now twenty of our middle schools are A or Bs, twenty out of twenty-two, or ninety-one percent. That's pretty remarkable. So it shows a direct return on investment. As a taxpayer, I want to see R O I on my, on my, on my tax fund, and we can demonstrate that R O I. So I think that we can advocate in terms of student achievement, in terms of releasing these dollars and having confidence in being able to release them to Pinellas County Schools and to the state of Florida and across the country. But the other thing I would mention, and those of you who watch our meetings or know me know that I can't miss the opportunity to give a Navy quote. The, the father of the U.S. Navy, John Paul Jones, said, "Men mean more than guns in the rating of a ship." So the person who founded the U.S. Navy and helped us through all the beginning, fighting wars, fighting battles that established this country. When it comes to rating the ship, rating the quality, yes, the weapon systems matter, absolutely. Just like our curriculum systems matter and our technology systems and our financial systems. But you know what matters most is our people, our people. And this, this money very particularly goes to training, leading, inspiring our teachers, who are the number one impact outside of the family life, the number one impact on your child's chance of learning and achievement, is their teacher. And so we would like to continue that kind of investment. I think there are several ideas, and I want to hear everybody's ideas on the table. I heard Dr. Howman share about having a town hall, making sure that we give public information. We do have public information prepared to make sure we can share with people about what is going on with the financials. And, and I think that it is important. I know we have a Listen and Learn coming up on the twenty-third, but that has other topics associated with it, and it, we don't want it to swallow up with this. So maybe we do consider having a separate forum and just the facts, just here's the financials, here's what's happened, just like you laid out today, Mr. Hendrick. Thank you. Because I get a lot of questions even before today, right? And I'm sure you all do. People are curious about education funding and how it works, because it is a bit of a quagmire. So to be able to explain it, but also talk about how it's changed over the last several years, so that people are aware again of their, of their tax dollars. So I think public information, town hall, we could talk about something like that. I know that, thank you for, for some of the materials that were provided around, you know, federal advocacy. As you mentioned, our federal delegation has done their job. They have appropriated the funds. They're being held by the executive office and the U.S. Department of Education. So I think chain of command wise, that you would go to our executive office and our Department of Education at the state level to advocate at the federal level. And so I think that, I've, I've spoken with Senator Hooper and Senator Hassan, I've left a message for Senator DeSigley. And so I think, and Senator Hooper will be talking to the State Department of Education, because they, they understand the July one year, because they are on a July one year. And so as far as advocating, hey, let's release these funds now. By the way, we know Florida's in compliance, you know, and being, and being confident in that. So I do think we could advocate with our State Department of Education and our governor's office and those who have an opportunity to speak with him, to have confidence in his schools and ask for their support. Ask for the state of Florida to step up and help us with getting these funds released for this year. And we're, we're happy to help with future reviews. We will open our books, we always have and we always will, to ensure legal compliance, financial compliance, et cetera. So whether that is in terms of us all choosing to make phone calls to those that we know well, or a letter, or those kinds of things, I'm open to ideas and discussion and just wanted to share those thoughts. But I do think it's an important time to, to talk with folks and share about these financial issues. Ms. Edmund?
Thank you. And thank you Superintendent Hendrick for highlighting the work that you staff and everybody in general has been doing once the news came out regarding the federal impoundment. I'd just like to speak briefly to the work that our partnerships has had in this area. Pinellas County Schools is a member of the Council of Great City Schools, and they are helping navigate this issue for not only Florida school boards, but school boards nationwide. We received an email from F S B A regarding COSBA, which is the National Organization for School Boards. And it is important that we're sharing information and collaborating with other state boards regarding the impact of the federal impoundment. So I did send the survey to Superintendent Hendrick so we can obtain some information to help with federal advocacy from the groups that we are a part of. Also, we did have a speaker who highlighted some great ideas that could help put this on the forefront of community members' and stakeholders' minds, whether it's having a town hall. I think it's another opportunity for people to engage with us. And yes, we could try and do things in isolations or silos individually, but I believe we're more impactful together. So hosting a town hall, whether you're providing a virtual opportunity or in-person opportunity, I think that is important. Communication, as you mentioned Superintendent Hendrick, forty-seven positions are impacted, programs are impacted, lives are ultimately going to be impacted. And that's just speaking to the federal impoundment, not the other things that are going to impact our school district. So having clear communication regarding the path forward is going to be necessary because we're going to hear different stories, misinterpretations of the facts. But if we are able to get out ahead of things, we will be able to navigate as best as possible during these uncertain funding times. I would recommend sending a letter to the office, the Education Department, as well as the Office of Budget Management, since they are the individuals or department reviewing compliance for the funds. And yes, we have state legislators doing advocacy as well. But if we are able to connect with the people who are actually reviewing, saying, hey, as Mrs. Hines mentioned, our books are open, we are compliant, we are willing to offer you whatever you're needing. And again, our district has been an A district two years in a row. We must be doing something right. So I support that as well. And then, last but not least, when we're communicating, we, we do know that the news picks up several things. Social media is being used. So having a clear and concise message, whether it's done through district social media or provided to partners, just making sure that it's clear and concise, so that it's not muddied. I am grateful for Superintendent Hendrick for bringing this item forward for discussion because it was something I was going to mention. But in hearing all of the information presented, as well as receiving your emails, there are lots of opportunities for us to engage community stakeholders, inform parents, and advocate for public education. So, thank you.
Ms. Blacksburg?
I also agree that a town hall type forum would be a good idea, especially if we're able to do it virtually, to inform the public exactly what we're talking about now, about what these cuts mean to Pinellas County Schools and the people affected, specifically our students. In budget talks, we were informed that our mental health allocations are pretty much flatlined from the state. We're not getting any more. We're not really getting a whole lot less, but we're not getting a lot more. And that combined with these title, for cuts, really affect the ability, one, for our social workers to do their jobs. We're low on those to begin with. And then, as well as our threat management, mental health ties directly with our school safety. So I think educating people with regards to how this affects our schools is important. And for people to understand that there is a lot of oversight and compliance with regards to how we use federal and state funds, especially with Title I, any sort of grants, we have to give them information about how we're using them, how we're using these funds and how we're using them correctly. So I think that's important to touch on as well. And finally, I'll say, we talked a lot about our stakeholders. I know I've said this before, and I repeat it often to anyone that will listen. The health and vitality and welfare of our public schools affects every aspect of our community, every single one. So whether you have children in public schools, whether you are a grandparent, whether you've never had children in schools, every single aspect of our community is affected by how well our public schools are doing. And I think we're doing pretty great so far. And we're doing great with, you know, decreased funds each year. Imagine if we were able to fund public schools the way that we should. Imagine what could happen. And I think it's important for the public at large to understand that, again, no matter if you have kids in school, your kids are graduated, you're retired, you've just moved here. Every part of our society and our community is affected by the health of public schools. So it is, we're all in this together. And I think it's important for all of us to realize that we can advocate on behalf of our public schools.
Thank you. Ms. Meyer?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I think that several things can be happening at once here. I agree that we do need to make sure that we're communicating effectively with the public as we walk through these very uncertain times. So I do think that, you know, a town hall would be beneficial, and I'd be happy to be a part of that as well. I also think that, I want to echo Ms. Edmund's sentiments that, yes, we don't want to work in a silo, but, you know, some of us have relationships with different people across the state. I have relationships with several people that are at the Department of Education in Florida that I could reach out to, and I'd be happy to do that, you know, kind of on my own. But I also think that we do need to reach out directly to the Federal Department of Education, put something together, a letter, and I, I support, fully support that we are in compliance with the use of these funds. I, I think that it is important to review how funds are used, how federal funds, state funds, any sort of public funds are used. I, I've been a strong advocate for that since I, I got involved in education. However, to pull the rug out from under the school districts, K through twelve school districts across the country right before school starts is, is really, is very concerning to me. And I think we need to take a step back and say, yes, these reviews need to be made, and I support them, we all support them. However, we need to move forward with this federal funding for the school year and allow this year to kind of be the review process. And I think if we all take a stance on that together and work, you know, with the consortiums and all of the other groups and advocacy groups that we're a part of, I think we can hopefully make an impact on that. So just wanted to share that I support all of the ideas that have been brought forth, and we'll, we'll do whatever I can individually as well to make sure we get that, those funds this year.
Thank you. Ms. Kane?
Thank you so much to all my colleagues. And I also a hundred percent agreeance that we need to move forward with some kind of letter of recommendation and also working collaboratively. I really like Ms. Edmund's idea of working collaboratively as a board, make sure our messaging is cohesive and concise and makes sense, not only to the Department of Education and the Federal Department of Education, but also to our community members if we do decide to put together an event. There's a couple of things I do want to say, though, because it's a lot of, lot of negative energy on this. And I like to lead with a positive. So I'm going to talk about some of the positive things, because, you know, there's always a bright spot somewhere in something that we're doing. And I think that Pinellas County Schools has proven over the last seven years how much we lean in on that. Some of those numbers mentioned earlier, from two thousand eighteen to now, I want us to also remember we're pre-COVID numbers. So the state, while they didn't- So the state, while they didn't advance in those percentages, and we did through the challenges, through what many districts are still trying to recover from nationwide, we not only overcame it, but increased by 14% in our proficiency. And that wasn't by a fluke of luck, that wasn't by mistake, it was by very specific programming, very specific targeting, and very creative ways of handling those challenges moving forward. So this, like anything else, is another challenge. It's a financial challenge that we will overcome as a district because we have some of the most incredible employees, we have some of the most incredible staff, who are not only well-educated but creative-minded, and we're able to overcome whatever is thrown our way. And so I lean in on maybe another idea for this educational outreach, because I think we also touched on how important our people are, and I want to come to that. That's the foundation of what we do, is building people, building children, building staff. That is what we do, and it's important that we don't remove programs that we see as valuable in our district. And so maybe, while it's nice to have the information as community members as to what is happening federally and statewide with funding and how it's going to impact, but what ways can our community step up to help our schools to make sure we're not losing those programs, if there is anything that our community members can do? What can they do? How much money do we need to continue important programs? And in what ways are business partnerships and community members that want to help their schools able to step up and do that? And if we could present something that was easy to look at for our community, I think there are many wonderful people who do value what we do in education and would be very, very willing to step up and help fill that gap, even if it's temporary, to make sure that we're not losing vital programming. And leaning in heavy on the improvement to middle school programming, I don't want to see any of that be affected by the finances, and I'm sure that there are other community members who feel the same, and I think that, you know, we can present those opportunities so that they will want to participate in that. So thank you all so much. I know, I know we stated moving forward, we want to write a letter, also do some advocacy, so I don't know if there's any additional ideas besides the community outreach and then doing that together. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kane. Mrs. Long?
I agree with all of my colleagues. This is one of the most difficult cuts, this soon to the beginning of school. I mean, in the thirty, forty-two years I've been here, there's been cuts, and we always make it through, but this is going to really hurt the students who need our support the most. You know, some families, they can afford private school, and that's wonderful. Some families don't need the ESOL or some of the services that we're offering, and charter's fine for them, but what about the kids that really need this? And I believe Pinellas County is a very educated county with a lot of individuals who have ideas. I believe that the forum would be excellent, where all seven of us and the superintendent meet with the public, and I think it should be a place big enough if we do have a large crowd, and I also believe it needs to be virtual, so that gives every single person in Pinellas County a chance to vocalize their concerns and to throw ideas at us. You know, sometimes it takes somebody outside of us to come up with a brilliant idea and go with it, or at least see how we could adapt it to our environment. And I don't think that legislators understand the extent of what schools do for our young citizens. If they did, I just can't believe they would go ahead and do these things, cut other places, but not in this. This is the foundation of our future. So I agree with all our board members, I think that we're really on a good page together. Now let's develop, stand strong, and go through this together as a united front, and I think public needs to see that about us. They need to see how connected and how we all take this seriously, and people need to see our faces. You know, you can say one thing and your face is saying something totally different, and I think that's very important for people to see that and understand how difficult this is for every single one of us, but especially the impact it's going to have on our children.
Thank you. I've been keeping notes of the various ideas, and we'll go over those. Ms. Edmund, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, just to emphasize that, we did not hear Superintendent Hendrick say that we would end up touching the reserves. So again, that is a kudos to our CFO and team for putting their heads together and trying to problem-solve through this situation.
If I may, Madam Chair, obviously, this is affecting every school district in the nation, this is not unique to Pinellas County, and as I've talked with other superintendents across the state, we've had a number of calls in the last two weeks. It affects everyone different. You know, we don't have migrant education in Pinellas County, yet there are counties in our state who rely heavily on migrant funds from the federal government to do this work, right? And you can choose each one of these funds along the way that are different, so everybody's in a little different situation, but where we all are in a similar situation is that because of our FEFPN, because of the small increase that we received this year, and the way that our budget process has worked in the state, there's not a lot of reserve funds in our schools right now. There just are not. We're not coming off of the SRAARP funds, where we have all these other things that you just say, oh, we'll just take it from somewhere else. So for us to go into our reserves and to go below our board policy of 5% or the state policy of 3% is just simply not an option, and it's not something that we are even bringing forward, and I've shared that with each board member as well. So Madam Chair, if you can summarize, I can summarize, if you want me to, I'll take a stab at it. I heard pretty resoundingly the idea of a town hall type forum where we explain what these grants are, what that means for us, and also what that might look like moving forward. I can work with the board chair to arrange that. I would suggest that that happened before our budget hearing, and based on the fact that board members want it virtual as well, it likely needs to be in this room because we have the infrastructure to do that, turn it around quickly, plenty of space, all of that. So we can look for a date soon to do that. Secondly, basically, a Dear Colleague Letter that can be used with the Federal Department of Education, with our state legislators. We've sent you a couple of drafts of some things, but yesterday, as the board chair and I met to prepare for this meeting, our communications team was there as well and sort of refined a letter, so we'll share that with the board this afternoon as to what that looks like, and then I'll work with the board chair to take feedback, and individual board members, you can send it to Mrs. Hauck, she'll give me your feedback, we'll see what we can work together, and then have a letter that can be sent out. And then, obviously, I think each of you have, not obviously, I know that each of you have already had conversations with different groups, some of our elected officials, some of our advocacy officials, on different levels. Some of that is, hey, let's advocate for the release of these funds, others have been saying to community groups, how can you plug in the holes? I know, for example, we've been in communication with the Juvenile Welfare Board, the six after-school programs, they can certainly step up and assist us with the after-school programming that they do for all of the rest of the students in our community at all of our other schools. So some of the cuts are, I don't want to say easily, but can be assumed, as Mrs. Kane said and Ms. Blacksburg alluded to, by other community groups who can step in. But when it comes to things, mental health supports during the school day or threat management, I mean, we're tasked with doing threat management, no one else. So obviously, that's going to continue in the school district, but something else in the school district is going to need to be cut in order for that to continue at its current level of performance. So a town hall type forum, Mrs. Hein, I'll work with you on that, certainly a letter that can be used, make sure it's clear and concise, and then anything that can be used on social media, and I think we sent you a couple of examples of those as well. What did I miss, Mrs. Hein?
Nailed it, I would say. Mr. Hendrick, I might give you an A.
Thank you. I'll take it.
I am going to go over them, though, again, just, so a town hall or community forum of some sort, from that element, we will also have social media and other forms of communications, maybe emails to families and things like that as well, and we will make sure it's available virtually. The advocacy, continued advocacy people are already doing with state and national councils that we are, we are, we are part of, the letter to the federal OMB and US DOE. Now, the letter to our state DOE and delegation or governor's office might look a little bit differently, but certainly be similar, we're asking them to advocate for us.
Correct.
Yeah, and a second ask could be that, you know, to give your school districts some stability, tell us now, at the state level, we will cover you. This $400 million to the state of Florida, listen, if they don't come through, we will come through for you, so that we can all at least breathe and start our school year, and then, again, we review, we will review any compliance you want, but tell us or cover us this year. So that could be a second ask in that, in that letter, if people agree with that idea. It also demonstrates, you know, their pride in their school districts as well. And then, yes, Ms. Kane, on the opportunity for community members and partners to step up and buttress if needed. Yes, everybody? Anything else? Good, okay.
I have one other item unrelated to all this, so are we ready to move on?
Oh, yes, sir, back to the super, or any other discussion on this topic. No, thank you very much. Mr. Hendrick, back to your superintendent.
Final item in the superintendent's report, because as Mrs. Kane, I like to try to end on a positive note, and that is our superintendent's standout. And our superintendent's standout in this meeting is Mr. Gary Notke, the head plan operator at Safety Harbor Middle School. He was recently recognized for hosting at his school, the Middle School Innovation Summit that was just talked about, with lots of teachers from across our district, and the staff that put that on said, "We'd like to extend our heartfelt appreciation for Mr. Notke for going above and beyond before, during, and after our conference. His unwavering commitment to excellence, exceptional responsiveness, and friendly can-do attitude made a significant impact on the event's success. Thank you for your dedication, your outstanding support. You are making a difference in student achievement. Thank you from the middle school team." Thank you to Mr. Notke and all of our employees for what they do each and every day.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, items introduced by the school board attorney, Mr. Kupersky.
Madam Chair, just because I didn't quite get it in as we were finishing that conversation, I just wanted to provide one more piece of information to the board regarding the federal grant funds, and that is, if you didn't already know, you probably have heard, twenty-four states and the District of Columbia have filed a lawsuit against the federal government seeking an injunctive relief and mandamus, basically a court order requiring the federal government to release the funds. So that just was filed yesterday, we are certainly going to follow that very closely, and I'll give you any updates that may impact us, and that, I believe, will probably move very quickly and probably will involve at least one, if not two, levels of appeal, which might also include the United States Supreme Court. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Items introduced by the board. Board members, additional comments? Ms. Blacksburg?
Yes, so in the essence of keeping things a little bit more positive after all that, I wanted to personally thank Commissioner Latvala for his work in conjunction with Pinellas County Schools and specifically our mentorship department. Not long after I was elected, I was, I learned about the program that Pinellas County Government did in conjunction with our schools for our mentorship program, and it was spearheaded by then-Commissioner Seal. I brought it up to Commissioner Latvala because the program lapsed during COVID and didn't really come back. So I spoke with him, he reached out to the county administrator, Mr. Burton, and I am happy to report that as of now, our county employees are able to be a part of our mentorship program if they so choose, and the time that they are away from their desk will be covered, so they are able to mentor our kids, and, yeah, so we're very excited about that, and I want to thank you again to Commissioner Latvala and Administrator Burton, and specifically Commissioner Seal, first we're hearing this, so.
Ms. Edmund?
Thank you. I would just like to briefly share that last week, we recognized JWB former CEO Beth Houghton, who retired officially, and it's been an honor to work with her, whether on the Community Alliance, and just seeing her impact and her team's impact throughout Pinellas, impacting the lives of children and families. So congratulations on your retirement and best wishes and your new adventures. And then, earlier, we voted on grant applications that were federal grants, and I just want to add, knowing that we're in this impoundment stage, that those funds are not going to be included in the budget, but we will continue to seek those grant opportunities, which is great. And I think it's also important to mention that if there are any needs to amend the budget by not including them, we leave that opportunity to add them if we receive the funding versus having funding and having to remove it. So thank you to Coral Marsh and her team for the information regarding these grant applications that were submitted and indicating, once the final award is received, that it would be included or reflected within our budgets. And then, as it was already mentioned, school is right around the corner, there are several back-to-school events. If you are interested in supporting a community partner hosting an event, you can look on social media or reach out to any group, but you can also contact schools and ask them, hey, what are some things that your school may need? Is it school supplies, uniforms? Right now is a great opportunity to tap in early. You can sign up to volunteer or mentor, that is also greatly appreciated. And again, we have staff working throughout the year, making sure the schools are ready to open in August. So thank you again to district staff, staff at our school sites, and all of our community partners that are making sure our district is running smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just add that there's much school board work to come and ways to engage with us with, again, next week on July 23rd is our Listen and Learn session at 5:30. Where is that?
August 12th is the Listen and Learn.
I'm so sorry. I have that on my calendar.
It's all right.
It is August 12th at 5:30 at Ridgecrest, and we will remind you in the future. Okay, I'll get that off of my calendar. But we will communicate about that community forum on budget, and certainly do engage with us. I also was just going to highlight that school starts in less than four weeks. I'm involved in the PTAs at my children's schools, so we are already talking about how we welcome teachers back to school. I think they come back August 1st, is that right? Friday, August 1st, and then that week of August 4th, a full, a full week of preschool at the schools, and then first day of school, August 11th. So please contact your schools and ask how you can support them. The very best thing we can do, in my opinion, is just ask a teacher, ask a school leader, how can I support you? That's it. What can I do for you? Because they are the ones who make the difference every day. So thank you, thank you for your support and your engagement in our schools. We will adjourn this meeting and move to public participation. Mrs. Hauck, do we have any speakers for public participation?
Yes, Madam Chair, excuse me. Board members and Mr. Hendrick, we have six speakers this morning.
Thank you. I'm going to read a statement we shared before public comment. "We will now move to public comment on the general business of the district. Please note that the views and comments of the public speakers are their own and not endorsed nor sponsored by the school board or district. We cannot ensure the accuracy of statements made, but will review concerns that are raised and take appropriate action, which may include clarifications or the referral of speakers to the proper staff member for assistance. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in conducting our meetings. This includes refraining from clapping or making audible noises during or after a speaker's comments, and we appreciate you assisting us in maintaining that civil environment. Additionally, please note that although board members or Superintendent Hendrick may leave the dais briefly, there are speakers in the back room, so we will continue to be able to hear your comments." Thank you so much. Please call him. Mrs. Hauck, thank you.
The first two speakers are Hamdi Abraham and Roger Wilson.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, chairperson, Mr. Hendrick, and all board members. May I just make a suggestion just before, anything else about the federal budgeting? I'm just suggesting, is there any future ideas of aligning the budgeting timing with the budgeting federal timing as well? So that could be taken in consideration. The other option is that we, for the time being, we can actually do an outreach for businesses and individuals in Pinellas County and throughout the state, if that helps out. Thank you so much. I'm here for my sons. I have an, I have basically like an issue with my sons transferring. My name is Dr. Hamdi Abraham, and six years ago, the district acknowledged... My name is Dr. Hamdi Abraham, and six years ago, the district acknowledged its legal duty to protect my sons by initiating an administrative transfer after Adam was physically injured and traumatized by bullying. The transfer was not optional. It was mandated under Title VI, the Civil Rights Act, and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Today, I'm here to expose how Pinellas County Schools has systematically violated those same federal protections. Evidence non-compliance in June 10th, submitted with 42 pages of evidence, including over 15 disciplinary incidents targeting Adam at Leila G. Davis, IEP violations, denying Ryan a free, appropriate public education, academic retaliation, assignments were rejected during unlawful detentions. Number two, district illegal response, missed the 10-day response deadline by 11 days. Policy J-XXX violation, issued a denial without providing enrollment capacity documentation. Florida Statute 1001.42 violation, refused to convene an emergency IEP meeting, IDEA 1415 violation. This red binder right here, I have, and I'm going to hand it to Ms. Holak. I submit today contained certified proof grade tampering, discriminatory disciplines, and contradictory district communications. Today's demands, one, immediate administrative placement to Safety Harbor Elementary, where as of July 8, 5th grade seats are confirmed available. Number two, available public audit of all administrative placements since...
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
When I first was asked to come here and give you the books that I've passed out, I thought, well, I can do something else at the same time. And that involves the chair. When I read the article that she wrote in the newspaper, wow.
Mr. Wilson? I'm sorry, we need to record all the comments, so somebody can come and pick up something that you may have, but you need to speak at the microphone, sir. Thank you very much.
Well, as I've noted, the article was very, very well-written, and I identified with it philosophically from a long time back. And my fundamental thought about that type of activity was, if there's something broken in the public schools, fix them. And don't start another whole new system of education in Pinellas County or the state of Florida. And so I took the article and had it, you know, fixed up a little bit for you. So there's one for the office and one for home, and maybe your boys can read it again to see what mom does.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
The other is the book that each one of you should have a copy of, and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that the reason why we're giving you that book is because we would like to see it in all of the schools. It's an excellent story written by Terry's grandmother, and it's a combination of history and real life, as a young lady would experience it. And one of the things that stuck in my mind was, they lived on Caladeese Island. Back then, it was a nice place to live. And to get to school, she'd have to row across Dunedin Bay. Now, how many students have that challenge today? You know? To me, I was impressed with that, and I think a lot of the students today would be impressed with it, especially the girls, you know? They're very much involved in things today. But I think Terry may come back and talk to you some more about that book being integrated in the school system. And she wrote the second part. It's a two-part book. The first part is maybe two-thirds of the book, but the second part is something she uses as to bring people up to date for what's happening today. And when you read the title, think about that. Yes, you know, "Yesterday, I lived in paradise." Doesn't that send a message for what we have to contend with today? Congestion, in one word? It seems like always you learn this when you get involved in community service activities. You know, financial gain is a very important emotion, and it's difficult to deal with. Greed is overpowering, and it makes for some bad decisions. But I hope you enjoy the book, and I hope that we can, in the future, make arrangements for the book to be given to each one of the...
Thank you. The next two speakers are Reverend James B. Warren and Cindy Recourt.
Hello, Madam Chair, Superintendent Hendricks, and the rest of the board and staff. My name's Cynthia Recourt. I'm retired special education teacher from 35 years and a current volunteer at Ridgecrest Elementary. Both of my sons graduated from Pinellas County Schools, and my grandson attends schools here now. Over the past few months, I have grown increasingly concerned about recent actions from the federal government that aim to deny our students the robust resources and inclusive learning environments that our communities have come to expect from Pinellas County Schools. Recent executive congressional and judicial actions push for changes in everything from curriculum to staffing to budgets and even the future accessibility of our school buildings. These actions should not undercut your responsibility, of course, to provide the protection, support, and resources that our students need. I feel sure that the Pinellas County Schools community wants all of our students to have the freedom to be themselves while pursuing their dreams, no matter the color of their skin, how they identify, or what challenges they may face. It is a trying time in our country, and this board may be presented, but now it is being presented, now that I heard what we said, with financial and/or legal challenges. And I'm asking you to publicly share your commitment to support, protect, and respect all of our students. They deserve nothing less than your continued diligence in providing a supportive learning environment that allows all students the freedom to pursue the future that they deserve. I'm going to digress now for my remaining time to add, from what we've been talking about concerning the freeze of funds. All of the discussion about connecting with the state or fed, federal DOA, comes with a place of them working for the greater good. And I wish that I could believe that that were still true, but it doesn't seem to be at this time in our history. The President and Secretary of Education have made it clear that their goal is to close the DOE. And with that being said, I'm not sure that they have our students' best interests at heart the way you do.
Reverend Warren?
1974, I remember 14-years-old, I lost two friends. One in the prison system, the other left with a kind of shell, killed him. The one who was killed, he was not a black boy, he was a white young man named James Honor. So my father saw that, so that's why I got them 50-some years in, working for school board. And back then, Superintendent Scott Rose and the other superintendent before Scott Rose, Gus Sikes, were superintendents. And they had a big brother, big sister program. My father got me involved with a very famous prosecutor. He nicknamed him Mad Dog Murka. And he was a good big brother. I'd like for y'all to push that more in the school system. And also, what we did with a lot of anger now, the school where I volunteered at, I saw a young man threaten the guy that makes sure the kids go to class, and he said he gonna beat the brakes off. Then I identified that with a lot of anger. I want y'all to give the administration more power to deal with these kids. And I asked the guy why he wasn't written up. He said he got an anger problem. And then I think about the drug problem we have now with the anger, is we got to push more volunteer. We got to have people, more volunteer like me, to reach out to these kids. To deal with this anger situation and the drugs. First, I'd like to thank y'all for making sure the classroom is locked. I appreciate that. I know y'all couldn't pass the melody attack the thing. President say need to bring spanking back. I don't think that gonna work no more. Because James Honor was beaten every day by his father. He got a hold of that gun, and deputy shot him in the back of his head. They were my personal friend. It happened on the tracks, not upon this kind of trail.
Thank you, Reverend Warren.
Thank you. God bless you. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Mark Clutho and Steve Russell.
Mark Clutho Largo, War is a racket. All you astute public servants have gotten the book, haven't you? Yeah, I'll bet. And the superintendent, what does he say? Twice, different. It was in adverb, differently. Are we going to be able to get good edumacation here when he can't even get an adverb right? I don't think so. So, you know, what do I hear? Oh, well, we're gonna listen. Listen to the public. For 25 years, I've been here with the science of high-performance passive solar building. And for nearly all that time, I've had this Solar Today publication, Better Buildings by Design. Winston Churchill said, "We shape our buildings thereafter they shape us." And so, what's the result? What caused extreme rainfall flooding in Texas Hill Country? Oh, it's right here. Waters in the Gulf are often three or four, five degrees warmer than normal. At one point this year, the sea surface temperatures in the Gulf of Texas and Louisiana were more than eight degrees above normal. As has been shown time and time again, event after event, climate change is leading to wetter, more extreme precipitation events. Well, like I say, when you make your stupid buildings to belch the carbon, you're paying attention, right, Long? This is what the building should look like, not your dark brown buildings. You people are disgusted.
Good morning. My name's Steve Russell, Pinellas County resident and father of four graduates of the public school system of Florida. Just a few things. If you're short volunteers, we have many retirees in Pinellas County that may not be aware that they could volunteer at the public school system. If you guys could figure out a way to reach out to them, you may get more volunteers in the system. Number two, there's a reason there's not very many people here, is because you guys care about your students and do the right thing, and I applaud you guys for that. Thank you. And lastly, I think it's within your power, keep ICE out of our public schools. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no more speakers.
Thank you. Forgive me administrative error that I seem to commit more than one time. Ms. Woodford, I'm so sorry. On our agenda, so back to the meeting, if we could briefly, do I need to do anything procedurally?
No, you can simply ask.
Okay, I skipped. I'm so sorry. Review of board requests?
I noted no board requests.
Okay, thank you very much. I mean, aside from the federal pieces we discussed.
I listed all of those items, but yes.
In our board discussion.
We reviewed those twice.
We did review those twice. Okay, thank you very much, and please forgive my oversight. I will highlight it in the future. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it. Take care.